Layout for gas stations, why? Because with this layout, you can go around, you have twenty-two feet to the south side of the pumps and you have twenty-six feet on the other side. So basically, you can maneuver around the pumps easily. So if there's a pump in the middle, you can go to the sides. With the other layout, you're really trapped. You have to be, you have to pull in where your gas tank is, on what side it's in. So if you're, let's say you're on the, in the middle and you're, and you're done. You can't really move because you have to wait either for the guy in front of you to finish. And if the guy behind you is done, you'll have to back out and try to go around. So this is really a safer layout. And at that time, you had that concern and you wanted to run it back to the planning board for site plan review and for engineering. And we did go back. We went back to the Plymouth Center Steering Committee and we presented the new layout. And also, I, I should mention that at the last meeting, I think I had a flat roof canopy. Since I met with the, with the Plymouth Steering Committee, we made a change to the canopy roof itself. So we did revise the canopy roof and this, the, the, the revised canopy would have an eight-pitch roof with asphalt shingles that would match the existing building, the proposed building. And we thought that this would be a better fit for the, for the surrounding and the, given the, the downtown historic in Plymouth. So that was a kind of, we got their recommendation to approve. We moved back to the planning board. I did meet with the planning board back in March, I think March 26th or the 24th, I can't recall. We did have a public hearing with the, with the planning board. I'm sure you have a recommendation for approval from the planning board. If you don't mind, if we can go to the last slide that shows the canopy. So the canopy architectural.
Do you? You don't have that, do you? You just love the canopy?
I think. You should.
You should, you should have it. I dropped off the, the plans to, to the office a few weeks ago. So this is what the canopy would look like. But, so the canopy has a fourteen-feet-six inches clearance that was concerned with the fire department and also submitted to the fire department a, a template of the fire truck that could access the, the property either from the east approach or the west approach on, on Plymouth Street. And, and they also have their recommendation to approve. So at this time, I understand this is a public hearing too, and there might be people in the audience who might have questions or some of you might have questions. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Well, we're gonna ask the board first questions.
I don't think we have that picture.
We don't.
We never saw that, just so you know.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure. I did drop off the plans, but this is the same, what you, if you look at the plan view, the canopy is seventy by, by, seventy-two by twenty. So I think the one you had originally maybe had the flat roof. So this is, this is one where we gave them two options and I think this is what the Plymouth Steering Committee wanted to see more, something more in line with the, the surrounding. But it did not change. The canopy dimensions did not change, whatever we submitted. So it's the seventy by, seventy-two by twenty.
Can I ask another question? Michael? Can I? So I, I, you may have, you may have misspoken, or I might not be reading it. You said twenty-two feet to the pump, I believe. Twenty-two feet to the canopy.
No, twenty-two feet to the, to the containment pad, to the edge of the canopy.
Right, thirty-one feet.
To the pump is thirty-one. I think you have the site plan.
Right, okay. That's not what you said, okay. And that's, that's just a single, like, three pumps, I mean diesel, regular?
Yeah. Similar to what he has now. We had multiple, single pump. One of them would have an option three plus one if you, one of the pumps would have it.
So one other question, I mean, this just looks to me like worse than ever to get in and out of. And I, I remember at that meeting, we did ask you if you would look at one way in and one way out.
Yeah, I, I think, given the, the, the fire truck that, specifically, I think I sent the, during the, the site plan review, I was asked to show the fire access to the property with the east and the west approach. So the truck can access the property either from the easterly driveway or the westerly driveway.
Can you share your microphone? Your microphone.
Oh. Sorry. I mean, given the nature of the, of the property, we need those driveways width and, and the directions for, for the fire truck, for the fire truck to, to access the property and also we need it for the, for the fuel delivery.
Yeah, I'm just like, like I talked about that night, I'm thinking about.
When I went to the Plymouth meeting, they were representative from the police station and the fire department. And the police station said they never had any issues with that intersection. I mean, the easterly, I'm sure you know the, the.
Okay, I mean, ultimately, it's our call. It's our call.
The easterly driveway has, has a traffic light, so it's controlled.
Yeah. I guess I'm selfishly thinking of my truck, which is twenty feet and twenty-four feet with the plow on it. And I, I, I can't picture getting in there and getting out and somebody coming out the front, or turning in the front in front of me. But anyway, thank you, appreciate it.
David?
I'm, I'm gonna echo Peter here. I went online this afternoon looking for design guidelines for gas stations. And in two different places, I found recommendations on stacking cars, that you need to have room for two vehicles behind the one that's at the pump. And, you know, just looking at the site, I, I don't know how that works.
One would be waiting on South Street or?
Yeah, so it's just, I mean, this is right off the internet, looking at guidelines. In virtually every other way, it, it matches. It has the clearance between the pumps so that someone could be at the pump and someone could drive around them. So all in all, it works. I'm a little worried about, it shows the fire, the fire trucks clipping the canopy, it looks like.
Underneath, yeah.
But the main thing is, I'm just, you know, worried of stacked cars. I just don't think it's gonna work the way it's, I, I appreciate the canopy back from the street. I appreciate even the look of the canopy, but I'm just, I'm worried about circulation.
When the cars pull up to the pump, will that be one way or can they go either way?
Either way.
East or west?
Yeah.
Anything else, gentlemen, at this point? All right, at this point, have you anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, thank you. Sit here.
All right, at this point, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this project, either in favor or against? Yes, ma'am. You have to come to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
I live on Fremont Street and our house property backs up to the corner of this. And I did see the preview, I saw this, we saw this whole thing, I don't know, maybe we got it at the planning board a short while ago. So we did see the most recent drawings that he refers to. I think it's that one. But I'm just sitting, listening, and listening to all of you and I'm saying the same thing. It just does, it already is a free-for-all with the two-way traffic. And I, living around the corner, it'd be nice to have a convenience store there, but I can understand, I'm just saying, I also understand the one way. And I, I guess I would rather see you have the one way. It's not gonna make a big difference to me, but, except for the, the ambulances that come by, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am, please come up and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Megan O'Neil. James and I own C-SU, the motel, which is at the back of this property. And I've met with Sam, the owner, a few times and he's actually walked us through the design of the building, 'cause we missed that first meeting. But I think, obviously, why would you spend so much money on moving the canopy layout unless you were trying to get more business? Otherwise, it's not worth the money. So I think, like we talk about with traffic, the more business is what scares me in that area, the traffic in that area. Obviously, with us getting out of the street is already impossible at two slots of times a day where the school's going on, which is unrelated to this. But I think, thinking of now, another thing on top of that, like, I mean, just thinking of like the traffic jams already is a little worrisome. And then also, I was just curious, I don't know if you can answer this here with this, but with the building, Sam wasn't totally clear if the building itself is moving from where the original building is, or if they're building it on the exact same footprint. I don't know if you can answer that, or?
We'll, we'll have him.
Okay. And that's, that's all I have for questions then.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the board. Have you anything you would like to add to what you just heard?
No, I just wanna clarify, yes, that the, the new building would be pushed back about maybe five, six feet from the old building. Yeah, but still, it's, it's in compliance with the setback, so.
So where that, where there used to be a space on the left side in the front where we asked for, I think we asked for the crosswalk, for a walkway there? So I guess you, you'd have to delineate that somehow with a no parking sign on that one?
On, on top of the exist, the fuel tanks? Is that what you're referring to? The left side of the property?
The stores in front of the, the spaces in front of the store?
Yes.
The one on the left?
Yes.
Which used to be a parking space, now has a crosswalk.
No, it, it is a park. We, we, no, we didn't eliminate, that's, that's, it's, it's access to the back to get the, the dumpster.
Okay, you'd still have to mark that no parking there. I, I don't picture with five spots to park at the store or six spots.
Seven, you have seven.
And one's a handicap, forget about that one, that's out of the question, that people aren't gonna park there. Whether you wanna get to the back or not, people are gonna park there.
Well, I mean, we can add no parking. I don't see how they're gonna block the, the walkway, the, the crosswalk, but we can, we can.
Well, isn't that, oh, is that an actual crosswalk or just painted on the pavement?
It's painted, yeah, but it's.
Yeah, that's what I meant. If it's just painted, someone will park there.
Of course they will.
I mean, we can, we can put no parking there.
Okay. And, and the other question, the gray there that we see, is that the, for the fire trucks? That's?
Yeah, yeah.
So they, there's enough, I, I noticed they, they needed fourteen feet or something so that he can go under that edge of that canopy without hitting anything?
Exactly.
Okay. So one thing I had is, what has changed since you were here last? The canopy, is that basically what's changed?
Canopy, and, yeah. And also, you lost one parking space in the back, one of the employee parking spaces.
Lost one in the back?
Well, we had four parking spaces in the back for employees. Now we have three.
Okay.
But we only have two, at the largest shift, we only have two employees in the, in the store, so, but.
Okay.
The direction of the pumps this moves.
Oh, yeah, but no, that, but that was from last time.
Yeah, that was last time.
Yeah.
So it sounds like, just asking one more time, it sounds like you gave them some thought to one way in and one way out, but decided that wouldn't work? I mean, I can't disagree with any of these. I go in there quite a bit and it's, it's kinda like crazy going in and out of there. And it just seemed to be like, a long time ago, it would've been much better if it was one way in and one way out, you know? And now you're saying people can go in, I didn't realize this, and they can access the pump from either direction?
Correct. But Mr., Mr. Connor, right now, it's two-way traffic too.
Well, we're trying to make it better, right? You're trying to get more business and make it better.
It, it's better with this layout because, as I mentioned before, if you come in in the wrong direction and your, your, your tank is on the wrong side, you have to go around the pumps to, to.
Right.
So with this one, you don't, because you can, you can access either side of the pumps.
If, if, if no one's there and you're not facing them head-on or whatever.
Well, I mean, not, yeah, but you have.
Well, it's me again in my twenty-foot-long truck.
Okay.
I pull in and I'm facing someone else. Now I'm about eighteen feet out into your driving lane now. And it's only, what is it, thirty-one feet from the fill-up, so, okay.
If I mean thirty-one, yeah, I, I, thirty-one from the center to the front, thirty-one from the center to the back, so, so you actually have almost seventy feet.
No, I'm just, I'm, all I'm thinking of is the vehicle that's at the gas pump, fueling up in my direction, and I wanna go there when he's done. So what do I do? I, I just wait out front in the driving lane? All the pumps are full. The only one that's, I see this guy with this little car and it looks like he's about done. I mean, it's like it, BJ's, you look for who's almost done.
All the pumps are full, you have six cars at the, at the fueling. Right now, if you have a car in the back, where do you go?
I mean, and, and don't take offense when I say this, but it, to me, it's like, you're trying to put fifty pounds in a thirty-pound satchel, okay? That's how I look at this.
Okay, I, I'm not, you know, whatever you've, I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, and trust me, I went back to this planning board for the site plan review and I went back to engineering and, you know, you wanted to look at it, you know, so, but again, if, if you feel, one thing is, you can make it a one-way in, one-way out. I don't know how you're gonna enforce it. I mean, we can put the arrows, but actually, we cannot make the driveways smaller, because like I said, you need that for the truck to get in, the fuel truck, and you need it for the fire. So, but again, I'm not, whatever you feel comfortable with, I'm not here to, to, you know, if you feel more comfortable that you make it one way in, if you, one, right turn in, right turn out, is that what you're thinking? Of, of course, I mean, you're not making that.
So if, if the fire truck was coming north on the street there?
It's east.
He can make that turn in there.
Either way.
The way it is right now, he can make that.
Either way, I, I sent, I have the template here. I sent it to, uh.
Yeah, I think we have that, from the fire department.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, I'm done. I gotta get a smaller truck, that's all.
I, I just feel with the fact that there's already a set of lights there on the south side, it's gonna regulate who's coming in and who's coming out. And on the north side, especially when school's letting out at Nathaniel Morton and somebody's backed up there, trying to take a left instead of going down to the lights and, and turning in, it just seems to make more sense if you'd have it one way at the lights.
Jason, would you like to speak to this at all?
So for inspectional services, I think we have two things that kinda stand out to me. One is the lack of showing signage on this plan or these plans. And so I'd question what the applicant's idea is with signage. Normally, we'd look at pre-existing signage as, you know, permissible to go back the same amount. But normally, it'd be shown, I don't know whether it's a pylon sign, whether it's canopy signage, so I'd question, just so that the applicant could demonstrate to the board what, you know, in other words, I'd ask that he shows the board what his intention is with signage. The second thing is, is that it's mentioned in the planning board's recent report, they have concerns about whether the, the fueling tankers can actually get on-site, given the new location. Similar to the fire apparatus, if you look at the, the, the turning of this gray shaded area, it begins off of Sandwich Street on adjacent parcels. So actually, getting a, a large vehicle into the site is important for refueling those tanks for the, for the gas station. And the planning board's deferred and, you know, said to you guys to, to make sure you address that. So I'd point that out, two things. Signage, as well as can they get fueling trucks back in there and out of there easily, again, in a, in a, in a normal way? That's all I have.
Anything else? How do you address?
I, as far as signage, I think there's no, there's no plans to change the sign that is there now, the pylon. As far as the canopy, there is some signage on the canopy and I think we would match the same size. And if it's over and we need the relief, we, obviously, we have to come back to this board, but that's not our intention. And as far as the access, the fuel tanks are not changing, they're in the same, in the same position. And right now, there's a building, a five-hundred-square-foot building between the pumps, to the north of the pumps that will be removed. So I, I would say the access for the fuel truck would be easier with this layout than the other layout.
Well, I'd come back to being worried about vehicular circulation while one car's at the pump and a second one is stacked behind it, then how can the third, there's no room for the third stacked car, but even if a car is trying to get behind the other stacked car number one to get past, I'm worried about that. And I also had in my notes the fuel truck circulation, you know, seeing how they get on and get off. And finally, even though I couldn't bring it up, have to keep on working on it or get a Chromebook, is traffic counts. I mean, the, the DPW had, you know, several comments because it is, you know, the traffic's at the traffic light. And I think they wanted numbers. Now, whether the planning board had said, do it before you're permitted, or do it before you get your permit, I'm not sure, but, but whether we should ask for both more vehicular circulation studies, as well as maybe some of that, that, that traffic study before we move further. 'Cause I'm also, 'cause it's an offset, you know, Lincoln Street and the other street coming in with the lights, so it's even more complicated. So circulation and the number of vehicles, 'cause that was a good point that the public mentioned, is, is a concern.
I'd like to have a traffic study done. Just, we give them the, the option of whatever three they wanna pick and go and have a complete traffic study done.
Because that might also inform the decision about one way, you know, one way in, one way out.
Now, what did you say?
It says, it's under the eighteen, we already approved this, we approved the project.
We approved our?
The initial project.
The?
It's, it's in the notes, and Connor said that it's supposed to be completed prior construction.
Could I, can I ask one question? I noticed a comment, planning board, about a trash removal truck. So would, would they drive in and then back into that dumpster, or do you think they could, if there were three cars there? Uh, there's only twenty-six feet left. How, how do you, does that work?
Front end loader, they pick it up and they back out.
Oh, the, with the one with the thing on the front, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
So you'd have to have that kind, okay. So that's?
We did submit the, the, the template for the, for the dumpster, for the dumpster truck.
Uh-huh. So with that said, you have about sixteen feet there probably?
Yeah, I mean, the truck is eight.
Ten, eight, nine, ten feet or something? Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're reading this right now. This, for people that are wondering what we're doing, this is the very first meeting that we have no papers. This is the entire paperwork for this case. We, we have all been forced to go digital and.
We all like it.
And it's a challenge, to say the least. So I'm hearing from the board that, that, well, what do you wanna do? David? What, what would you like to see?
I guess I'd like to continue it, to be able to see more site circulation studies and a traffic study. This is a very complicated intersection, getting in and out, plus the schools, you know, at certain times of day. It's a, it's a very complicated area. So I'd like a little more study.
And better plans. Plans that show all of this.
Right.
Plans that not, better, better by meaning more information.
Yeah, I mean, for, for instance, you know, looking at it, 'cause when I try to put my design hat, you know, if it was two pumps and not three, you could rotate it ninety degrees and have a lot more room for stacked cars in and out. So, but that's just, you know, throwing out an idea to sort of get to a successful conclusion. I just think it's having three pumps with the required spacing it has now just, just has the circulation pinched on top and bottom. So I'd like more study.
Let me just ask Jason a question. When you were talking about signage, I, maybe I jumped to conclusions, I don't think you were necessarily just talking about on the canopy. Were you talking about internal site signage as well?
Everything. I think there's no, no depiction of any signage at all.
Right.
And.
I mean, normally, we'll see, you know, stop here or left turn here or something.
Yeah, even, even with the understanding that the canopy, I mean, the, the existing pylon sign would be repurposed, it's not shown on this plan, so it doesn't give scale to what's, what the site's actually gonna contain. And so, no, I agree that directional signs or wayfinding signs are important to a site as well. And that could be one of the keys that a consultant or, or an individual would recommend to help with this site. So, you know, it's a good question.
I'm good so far.
Edward?
I'm good so far also.
Okay. All right. I have the same concerns as, as David and Peter and Kevin about the traffic. We need a much, much better explanation of how that's gonna be handled, number one. Number two, I wanna see something that shows how that, that tank truck is gonna operate on that site. Number three, we need to, a whole sign package. That's, that's standard with all of these things. We need a sign, a whole plan showing where the signs are, what the signs are. And you might wanna get with the, with, with Jason to find out if there's places where you need to put a stop sign or a walk sign or a no parking sign, all of that. We need to see all of that on. all of that on some blueprints. So it would be my suggestion that we continue this hearing until, I don't know, you tell me, Denise. How long do you think it's going to take?
Mr. Chair, if we need to do a traffic study, that's two, three months. So I need to go back and consult with my client. So one of the options, we keep it open. If he decides that he doesn't want to pursue with this, I can come back and ask for withdrawals, hopefully without prejudice, to take this one out, because we already, we can, we were ready to start the construction. So if this is the case, I think, I'm not sure how, three, four months, because by the time you hire a traffic consultant, come back to you, you might have some comments, go back, before we know it, it would probably be September again. So we don't want to miss another construction season. So I think I have to go back. As far as signage, I would all respect through Mr. Silva. I think, you know, regulatory signs, are they part of the signage that count on these? I don't think regulatory signs are signs, correct? We're talking about the signage, you're concerned about the signage, the signage on the building, the signage on the canopy and the pylon sign, correct? And as I mentioned, if we don't meet those requirements, he's going to send us back to the zoning board. So we know what we need to do. Right now, we're keeping the signage as they are. The pylon sign and the signage on the canopy will match the exact same size of what's there now. Stop sign, I agree, I can add the stop sign regardless. We'll put stop sign, I can put stop lines. Also, if you feel more comfortable, I can put the word "stop" at the driveway with the stop bar and a stop sign, which is, I'm doing this regardless. Well, you know, this is a good practice. So either we can continue and I got to talk to my client, either we're coming back, or if you have the option, I'm not sure if you're leaning. I submitted, when we first started this project, I submitted a traffic impact analysis. Gas stations are not traffic destinations. We know that everywhere. People are not driving from Kingston or Waymouth to come to Kanan Fuel to Fuel. So most people that are there are the people that live in town or work in town. They're driving by, they get their gas, they leave. So, because I'm changing the orientation of the three pumps, I'm not increasing the traffic on that site. This is a fact. But again, if you feel more comfortable that you want to, you know, control this by doing, by one way in, one way out, you can do that. It's then an option. I can go back and talk to my client and explain that. I personally don't have an objection to it. You know, or the other option would be, we continue the hearing, I'll consult with them and I'll say, you know, we need to do this and this and this, and that may be another three, four, five months, whatever it's going to take. And he might say, yes, let's do it. Or he might say, you know what, let's do it, let's build it the way it's approved. And, you know, this way I would submit, either I come in front of you, or I send you a request in writing for withdrawal without prejudice if this is the case. So I think...
I have one comment.
Right?
Just one comment. You, I know, and I understand, you state you're not increasing the activity at the fueling. But you are increasing the activity at the building behind it, big time. So the whole lot is probably much busier than it used to be. If you've got now, whatever, six cars in there getting fuel, and another five people in the store, plus the three people working in the store, and they're coming and going, we've increased the activity on that site quite a bit, I think.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not increasing, I think I heard comments about traffic. And so I'm just, I'm not increasing the traffic at the street, that's what I'm getting to.
But you are.
I'm not increasing the traffic on the street.
How can you say that when you're adding, you know, six or seven parking spaces to a fast food store?
So the more parking spaces, so the more parking spaces I have, the more traffic I have to decide?
You are putting up a building like a Cumberland Farms.
Okay. I think when I came...
Smaller. I understand it's smaller. I'm not trying to compare you to Cumberland Farms. But what you have now is just a little tiny shack...
Okay.
That somebody can pull up to and grab a cup of coffee or something. And now you're building a convenience store. Well, you can't convince me that that doesn't increase traffic on that site.
On the site it will, not on the street. No, you'll get more...
Wait a minute, where does that traffic come from? Where does the traffic come from?
It's coming from the street.
Oh, okay.
They're already there. That's what I meant. And people, I mean, Mr. Connor, again, with all respect, I'm not here, I think I really, you know, appreciate the time, appreciate, you know, I mean, we came here, this is not the first time I come here, this is probably, I've been, this is my sixth time here or in front of the other boards. And again, you know, I respect your opinion. And if you think this is not a better layout for the site, that's fine. I'm not going to argue with you, you know. And again, I said, we already have an approval to use the site with the existing pumps that we have. And if this is the option that my client wants to do or pursue, that I have to respect that too. But I really don't, you know, is, I don't think this is the first gas station that you have in front of this board. I'm sure every time somebody came to this board, they tell you that gas stations are not traffic destinations. And I think you've heard it before. And again, we can go back and we can spend $50,000 on a traffic study that can tell you the same thing I told you. But I don't think we want to do that right now. We don't have the time to do that, probably. So, you know, I wish this was done from the first time completely, but I really, the canopy is not that bad. You know, I, I mean, it's there, he can spruce up the canopy, he can probably paint it and make it look more attractive, but it's there, it functions, it's fine. So.
Well, I will make a motion to continue case 4123.
Four?
Four.
4155.
I thought it was 4123. Okay.
4155.
4155.
4123 was already approved.
Where I would like to see study, you know, graphic studies of circulation for vehicles in and out of the three pumps, and also the fuel truck on the site. He's already demonstrated the fire truck. We already have the planning board recommendation, which we could just, you know, continue, but I, you know, that's a requirement or a recommendation from the planning board prior to any kind of permits, right? What was it, note number seven? But I want a successful site circulation demonstrated to us. So that's my proposed continuation.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Did, Dave, did the site circulation include queuing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I missed that, thanks.
Stacking, queuing.
Is there a second?
A second, Matt.
Okay, David made a motion.
I'm sorry, this is continued to one, I didn't hear the date.
We don't know yet.
Certainly. Yeah. We could also add, you know, as our building inspector requested, the documents also include a signage package. So we have onsite circulation, queuing, parking, how do the parking, people get to the, in and out of their spaces when there's stacked cars. So vehicular circulation and signage, I'm willing to, you know, not necessarily mention the traffic study because it's already part of the planning board's recommendation as a condition. So we can come back to it when our applicant comes back here to look at things.
Okay.
To present things.
Okay, so we have a motion by David and a second by Kevin. Are, from what you've heard, you're comfortable with a continuation?
Yes.
Okay.
I need to consult with my clients.
Okay. So we have a motion by David and a second by Kevin. And some of the things that were requested is blueprints showing site circulation, showing the fuel trucks coming and going, and the traffic circulation onsite and offsite.
And signage.
And a signage package, as requested by the building inspector. I have a second. All those in favor? It is unanimous. So we need a date. How long do you think it'll take you to get that much information together?
If we can get on the 19th, will be good.
Of May?
Yes.
I already have three cases that night.
I mean, we can do May 5th and if I'm not ready a couple of weeks before, no, there's nothing on May 5th. Okay, so...
June 2nd.
June the 2nd?
Okay.
At 6:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes that case. And the next is an informal matter. And if I can find out how to do this computer again.
The other one first, please, Denise, the one with the more, the one with the more green on it. I gave you two, but you put the other one up first, please.
Ace Hardware Store in Cedarville. And representing will be, please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Hi, everyone. Nice to have this earlier meeting time, still light out. For the record, Rob Dambroso, attorney at law here in Plymouth at Dambroso Law. I'm here on behalf of Westport CD Realty LLC, which is the site owner and common ownership, actually, with the Ace Hardware Store that leases the site. So I've got Ed Siegel and Glenn Finkelstein here with me, the principals at Ace. And we've got the Ace Hardware Store manager, Kevin Ponte, here as well, in case they can answer any questions. So I just wanted to kind of make some remarks, why we're here, and a little bit of site history. I won't go on for too long. So in 2008, just to refresh everyone's memory, this site, including the larger site off to the right of the screen that is now the 55-plus housing development, was permitted, this portion of the site was permitted for a 14,000 square foot retail shopping center. We came back, I came back with these folks in 2021, under site plan review for a condition of that existing 2008 special permit to kind of crystallize the design of this site. And I think this board was generally pleased that we were doing something smaller and a single-use establishment. So what got permitted in 2021 by this board was the 10,000 square foot Ace Hardware Store. And there were some adjacent improvements done as part of the permitting process. And I guess what I would say is, since then, I think we've got a, well, I know we have a thriving location. The Ace is doing very well, seems to be a nice amenity for the neighborhood. As far as I'm aware, there's been no traffic circulation issues, there's adequate parking. As you might recall, there's a cross easement with the restaurant to the south as well that provides additional parking. But the site seems well laid out and everything is functioning properly. That said, there was the concern expressed, and I guess I won't put too much lipstick on it, it's a violation notice that we are, that the site is stacking some materials around the site. And that notice issued in March, mid-March, my folks got right on it, contacted me and said, well, we want to clear this up and do the right thing, certainly. It's a valuable site and they take a lot of pride in it. So what we were asked to do in that notice that came under Spencer's cover here was to, you know, schedule a meeting, a meeting rather, and prepare professionally drawn site plan to denote where we're storing these materials and how we plan to screen it effectively. So that's what's on the screen here. I guess, just a couple of things to point out here. You know, first of all, I think it's not uncommon to have a retail store that displays some goods outdoors for sale, particularly where, you know, with the Ace, you'll have bags of mulch or loam, gardening materials, et cetera. So I think it's not uncommon, but we are cognizant of the fact that, you know, this is a high visibility area, and I think that's why it's probably on everyone's radar, you know. Lowe's can stack stuff to the ceiling outside and it probably doesn't impact folks or maybe Home Depot like it might on this, you know, kind of hallmark of Cedarville. So we appreciate the concern. All of the goods that are on the site, so again, this is a sketch, and our landscape designer had oral surgery, couldn't be here tonight, so I'll do my best. But these kind of gray areas here are crushed stone. And that's, upon that crushed stone, there's pallets full of material. Like I said, I think at this time of year, you see a lot of gardening supplies. And just to be clear, this is not storage for other sites. This isn't a distribution facility, it's not a warehousing operation. This is actually all material that's sold at this site. It's just, they move a lot of material, so they get large shipments and it moves pretty quickly. So, you know, the reason it's here is really just for the intended use. It's not, it's not some bastardization of the permitted use here, just to be clear. So again, what we've done here is we've, per the request from the March 18th letter, we've illustrated where the materials are, we've shown that stone that's underneath them, and some of this landscaping is existing. So these alder trees were part of the original landscaping plan, they exist. And then what we have here is a proposed thick landscape screen. So it's a mixture of these green giant arborvitae's and then some globe arborvitae's kind of staggered in between them, and that wraps around this site. So again, without going on too long, you know, we think we've answered the call here in terms of providing some screening. We're certainly open to additional feedback. And, you know, again, the landscape designer put quite a bit of thought and care into this plan. We think it'll work well. And again, allow there to still be some amount of material on display for sale, but, you know, screen it so that it's not the first thing you see when you're driving down State Road. And again, this was trying to balance the concern of, you know, screen these goods, but still allow visibility to the site. You need to be able to see the Ace from the street. So that was the balance that Taylor Hathaway, our landscape designer, tried to strike when she came up with this. We have an alternative plan if this doesn't please you, but this was kind of the preferred plan, and I think it looks nice. So that's it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, I've got all the brain trustors here with me too, and they can answer questions also.
David?
Does this encroach on existing paving, or is this all beyond the existing paving?
This is, this doesn't, yeah, no, this is, this does not encroach. So this was, I probably should have brought the plan that was approved in 2022, but this was all designated as kind of green space, so to speak. We're just dressing it up with more plantings, you know. Because right now, what you've got is, Mr. Peck, is kind of lower, kind of knee height shrubs and plantings, and this is going to kind of push it up in elevation to provide more screening. So... in elevation to provide more screening, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter?
So it, it, just, just clear my mind. It took about three months to respond to the building department. Does that sound right?
You said promptly.
I don't think it was that promptly. I just.
The letter dated March eighteenth, and these folks contacted me, I think, within days.
Okay.
This, so I, you know, I think they didn't get on it, you know?
Yeah, so the building department sent a letter on eleven-twenty-two.
Oh, uh.
Okay. Anyway, that's, that's the end of the, um, what was my question now? Uh, oh, what, what actually prompted the complaint? Was it just stacks of bags, or were there trailers out there or anything like that, or?
Yeah, but these folks can contradict me.
I mean, you talked about Lowe's. We don't have a Lowe's.
Uh, yeah, I know. I said, I realize that as I said.
Don't count Lowe's.
Yeah, got it. Um, yeah, the, the, this was, um, no, it was, it was just goods, materials, yeah.
Because I do remember when we looked at this case, we had a number of concerns about parking and, because, because as I recall, some of the parking overlapped the restaurant next door or something like that.
There's a, there's a cross easement to allow parking.
Shared parking, that's right. Shared parking, that's what it was. So those parking spaces on the right side are exactly the way they were when it was first approved.
Correct. We haven't taken away any parking as a result of this landscaping.
So you haven't eliminated any parking?
Yeah, and in fact, you know, just to put a point on it, Mr. Con, when I spoke with my folks, I said, well, what if we moved everything back here and took out a bunch of parking spaces? They said, well, we really can't.
Don't move that too quick. I'm getting dizzy.
Okay.
So.
You don't have a cat, huh?
Go ahead.
So, the complaint was originated by me, or not by me, by, I'm one of the neighbors. People that live in that new retirement village walk by my house every day because my house is right on the edge of the cliff, and there's a place right next to it that people come, sit, watch the ocean, watch the end of the canal, do all of that. And they know who I am. And it's been basically complaints coming from the age-restricted folks. And it's complaints that when they bought it, things were under construction, and they had no idea that this kind of storage was going, this kind of clutter. So, and which, to myself, I don't care. But I have neighbors that do, and, and they read and they, they think they're attorneys. I don't think I'm an attorney, but I have to listen to them. And so that's how this got here. The second part of it is that one of the board members, one of this very board members, went down to a function at the restaurant next door one, I don't know, Saturday, around three o'clock in the afternoon. And this was when construction was still going on up back. And all of those units hadn't been sold yet. He couldn't find a parking place anywhere for the restaurant, for the hardware store, anywhere. Every single parking place was taken. He went up back and he parked in one of those, assumed empty units and walked down the hill to the restaurant. Twenty minutes later, the police were in the restaurant looking for him. What are you doing parking in somebody's driveway? Because he figured that they were under construction, he could get away with that. But parking is of such an essence that, I mean, it is so tight. And on a Saturday or a Sunday especially, when your store is the busiest and that restaurant is the busiest, people are parking across the street and happen to walk across State Road. They're parking over at the supermarket and walking down. It, you can't take any parking places that were designed for that place in the beginning. And there, behind the store is what most people are complaining about. The fenced-in area, the construction box, all of the stuff that's stacked out there and everything. There are probably five or six parking places out there that are being taken. So, and, and you can see them marked on the ground, so, yeah, it's being taken. And you weren't granted any significant outside storage when the permit was done. I hate to do this because I shop in your store. And, and, but I don't want to listen to the neighbors anymore either, so we've got to come to some kind of a resolve. Now, what I see here is there aren't any, uh, fenced-in areas out behind the store. If that stuff's all cleaned up and not there because there's no permit for it to be there, then I can say to my neighbors, listen, the guy is really trying. Give him a break. That's the, that's the whole thing in a nutshell.
Yes.
Attorney Dan Bruska.
Yes.
Dan Bruso?
Bruso?
Close enough. Dambroso, yeah.
Dambroso?
Yeah.
I want to get it right.
Dambroso, yeah, thanks.
Okay. Fencing, it says, we can install a fence along Old County Road. I don't live down there. Does that?
Why?
Make sense?
Yep.
Why don't I live there?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, why not? Come on down.
I like West Plymouth.
Snob.
So is that? Is that just, uh?
So, so.
A possibility, or is that in the plan?
Uh, door number two, please. Um, Vanna, thank you. Um, yep, so we actually, we had that plan. I, I thought, and my folks thought, that the, um, landscaped plan, the planting plan was more appealing, um, a little less institutional, but we did present, we did prepare this for that very reason, in case this struck someone as a better alternative. So you can see here about halfway up the, uh, site coming off of, uh, State Road, we've got this wraparound fence. Um, again, not the preferred option, but they're happy to do it if this pleases the board.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go, go ahead.
Rob, in, in the letter that I got in my package, it says, uh, they had previously been approved for storage there. Where did that approval come from?
Show it to me in the conditions of the case.
I, you know what? I'm, I'm not seeing it, Kevin. Where, in this, uh, March eighteenth letter, it says it was.
It's on the, um, the email from Mr. Pont on Thursday, February twenty-seven.
So I don't have the email.
I'm writing to follow up on our meeting last week. We understand that outdoor storage is not permitted. However, in previous years, we have been allowed to designate specific areas for pallet displays. But I've hi, attached a map highlighting the areas where we were previously permitted to store these pallets.
Oh, it was, it was correspondence from my client to?
To, yes.
Yeah, I, I think that was in, so my understanding, and again, I, I think now that you say it, you know, maybe March eighteenth, that's a fair point. Wasn't the first communication. I think Colleen Tavakelling had been on site, and there'd been some informal dialogue with Colleen, and she had said, again, she's not here, so I don't want to put words in her mouth, but my understanding is, yeah, Kevin can speak to it. I think there was an informal, hey, look, just make it taste, go ahead. Is it okay if the manager, store manager, Kevin Ponte, speaks to it?
Please.
All right, so as far as this.
Your name for the record.
Oh, Kevin Pont. I'm the COO for GE Supply that runs the Ace Hardware.
Sorry, I called you Stormy Johnson.
Yeah, consulting. Um, so as far as the November letter and us coming, I was waiting, you know, until March to get back. I, Spencer and I had gone back and forth to trying to get a meeting, and there was a delay. And then as soon as I could meet them, I met with them. So that's why I just took until March to get the letter. Um, the person, so there is another little storage area, um, next to the dumpster, um, that's right around, right around here, that it's fenced in. Um, Colleen, I think, um, at the time, allowed us to put the, that area in, and it's screened, um, so you can't see what's inside of it. Um, and she, and that's why, and also over here, um, where we have the pallets, where, um, there's a stone now, uh, where she had said we could put pallets outside, so we, you know, that's where she permitted that we could put pallets, um, verbally. And so we put stones so that, we're putting the pallets where, only where we were told that we could put them. So that's where, um, the outdoor storage thing in my email came from.
Who told you?
Who?
I think it was.
Hmm, interesting.
I guess, when I talked to her, I guess it was like a lapse of whoever was in charge, whoever handles this, um, it was a lapse, and she was kind of filling in. And she came out and actually walked the property with us.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And at that time, we were just trying to figure out a way, where, where can we put the pallets?
Okay.
Yep.
So what about that box that's out there, the, the construction box?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're removing that.
And the, the fenced-in area, I still don't see it on the permit anywhere that you, you're allowed that fenced-in area.
I.
Okay. All of that stuff up back.
Yeah.
And that's basically because those people sitting up on the hill are looking down at that, saying they didn't want to move into an industrial lot.
Yep.
That, I, I look at the ocean. But, yeah, but people, you know, have some expectations as to what should and shouldn't be. And if you clean that stuff up out back, well, two, and as Peter brought up, two things bother me. One, the, the amount of stuff that's stored outside, and two, the, the lack of, uh, immediate response, and maybe not even that. It's the, well, we know that they don't want us to do it, we're going to do it anyway. Because this happened back in the late last, late last year, and then all of a sudden trucks started showing up and unloading, more and more and more and more. And that almost flies in the face of inspectional services of this board, of the town. And that kind of bothers me.
So, um, we're, we're trying to, we have an out, offside storage, outside, like off-site storage area that we're, we're putting pallets now, um, to alleviate having all the extra pallet space, um, pallets in the space. So if you went by now, other than that metal container, which we'll remove, um, there shouldn't be much of anything in parking spaces, um, just in the fenced-in areas that are there.
With the landscaping and your commitment to only thirty-day supply, I'm good.
Yeah. I want this to work. I really do. And that part of it, everything that I've seen so far is an improvement. I just want you to know that, that as Peter has said, and I've said, and I've had private conversations with, with inspectional services, they've been a little frustrated that the, uh, response has been kind of lackluster at times. So if, whatever we do tonight, we don't want lackluster.
Going forward, it'll be different.
Okay. What do you want to do, fellas?
Well, I think one thing, they've offered two proposals.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, pick one.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think the screening's a good idea. I think, you know, a fence, an attractive fence could be handsome, you know, thick ledge landscaping would be acceptable too.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to decide that. And then I'd just add what, what you said. Nobody should put stuff on parking spaces. If they've been approved parking spaces, um, unless they rent them or something like that, but, but even that, if, if part of our approval, you know, has a formula of required parking spaces, they shouldn't put, you know, wipe out five or six with stuff. So I'm glad we're going to come to closure, but, but nobody, not this applicant or others, should take approved parking spaces and use them for other uses.
What do you want to do?
I don't care. Do you think, uh?
I guess I would say, ask, you, do you think the fencing is a good idea?
I don't care.
Oh, okay. Well.
I just.
What, what I would say then, I like the fencing because it would be immediate, as opposed to landscaping that might take a time to fill out. So like a cedar fence or something that's attractive and blocks the view within a day of it being installed, might be better than landscaping, which would take a while to fill in. I don't feel that the board decides. This is kind of a nuisance. I wish it didn't happen. Got a business, trying to run business, trying to make a buck.
Yeah.
And so I think I don't want to, I want to be business friendly. It's on, it's been on. So I'm okay with whatever the board, I just, I just want this to be able for the petition or the owners to work with it so they can run their business efficiently for the betterment of themselves.
Well, then I'm going to ask you, which of the two propos, I'm okay with either one of them. And I think the rest of the board is. So now, which proposal would you fellows like better? Which would you prefer to do?
Well, I have one.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Hi, I'm Glenn Finkelstein. We, and I own the property, and Kevin obviously works with us. Uh, the only problem with the fence that would block the back property, the people that live behind us, we'd be happy to do it because we understand if they walk up and down, they don't want to see the back. That's our receiving area. So even, even in the best of times, it doesn't look, it looks like the back of a building.
Mm-hmm.
So I understand if you live there, it's, but they're pretty high on a hill. So I'm afraid if we put the fence way down low where our property line was, which is almost where those bushes are that you see there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm afraid they might see over the fence from up there. So we proposed, uh, probably would have to get the association's permission that owns the houses back there. We'd put that fence, probably be on their property, but be happy to pay for it. Be a nice white vinyl fence. We've used it in a lot of our locations. It's attractive. Uh, reason we thought of the fence is that it would hide, totally hide everything, uh, including the back of the building. Uh, you know, it's not going to hide the HVAC units that are up high, but it certainly would rehide, hide our back door and.
But if we went with the planting plan, then that would be a different.
If it went with the plant, if we went all planting, I mean, we could just do a fence if everybody wanted to do greenery the whole way along County Road. We could do greenery all there and just the fence where the units are behind us. But we're happy to put the fence all the way on County Road if, if you think the community would prefer not seeing the side of our building there. Obviously, we didn't want to put it in the front of the building because I think it would be, totally block our business. It would, it would kill us. So we're really trying hard to provide something special and be successful, but also not have anybody mad at us. You know, we take a lot of pride. We need those neighbors to like us. We want, I don't want to shop us if they don't. Uh, and we think, I mean, I'm five generations in this business, so we've always been communities like Plymouth. As a matter of fact, my great-great-grandmother is from Plymouth, and that's where we got our start. Toby, maybe busting up Toby Hardware, maybe, or anybody here. You guys probably too young, but.
No.
So we want to do the right thing, and we certainly apologize if the store has been, it's, it's been busy. And it seems like the nature of our business has changed over the last four or five years, a lot more than it did in probably the previous fifty years I've been in business. Uh, more demand for heavy goods. Uh, people love to garden. They've good, since COVID, they're out in their yards way more than they ever used to. They don't want to go to Home Depot and Lowe's, and they don't, it's not something people want to get online. They want to come to the store, uh, come in and get their hose and garden hose and all, uh, garden equipment, but also be able to pull their car or truck right up to the piles, load up, and of course, we'll do it for them, but that's what they want. We certainly want to give it to them. We, we need the customers, so appreciate your patience. So appreciate your patience with us, all of you. So we're, we're amenable to do whatever you guys want, but perhaps the fence, if you want a fence, we're happy to do the fence.
What, what about they put the fence just along the back? And do their shrubs everywhere else?
Yeah, I think...
If they can work it out, the neighbors, fine, but if not, just put it wherever it has to go.
Rob, did you hear that?
Pardon?
How about you put the fence in the back like you're talking about and then do the plantings along Old County Road and that part?
So, so you want the fence on this property line?
Yeah, yeah. And then the plantings, the plantings are, are a lifelong thing. A fence is, every 15 years it falls down or somebody runs into it or some... Vegetation grows and it's nice. And I think it would enhance your landscaping. But the fence out back, like you said, it'll block some of the view and it'll take some of that away.
Right, I was, I was good, that's what I was just, just kind of conferring with Glenn over. So I think the only, the only issue is if we did the fence, there's not room, because we've got a retaining wall here. And we can't put it below the retaining wall. It wouldn't do anything to screen. It would take up parking, so, and, and as Glenn or Kevin pointed out, this is pretty much your lot line. So we could do the fence, but we would, to, to make it worthwhile, we'd have to get permission from the HOA to put it on their property.
Yes, and if that can't happen, then just go ahead with the plantings all the way around.
Okay.
We're just trying to make it a little...
That, that's perfectly reasonable for us.
A little easier for you.
Yep, and, and I have a contact.
You know, to facilitate. People are going to say, "My goodness, they're fixing this right." And that'll help. And it's something kind of immediate, you know, to show the neighbors. And the other part is the plantings will last a long, long time. And then, two birds, one stone?
All right, so...
Yes, please.
Rob, before you put the fence up on someone's property, you've got to get an easement. You're going to have to have a plan. Who's going to take care of the, of the fence on a go-forward basis? I think that the fence is a bigger production than, I think that, uh, I mean, it's a bigger, it's not just putting a fence up here.
No, it, it, and that's why I said the preference would be for landscaping. It's simpler, it's within control. We don't have a third party involved.
I would say, from a legal perspective, I wouldn't do the fence.
Not our preference.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's, it's a hardcore thing. You've got, you've got title issues.
Mm-hmm. Which is, which is a good observation.
And I, I saw a thumbs up, so...
Well, I don't think it was stated that you can't do a fence on your property.
Correct.
It's not as effective.
Right, we, yeah, exactly. It would take up parking and be too low.
That's life, then. Maybe they have to live with it that way.
Yeah, so, so we'll...
I mean, you, you, I think you were, you were afraid that folks could see over it, right? I mean, you know, from my point of view, we're not trying to block you from the world. And if it blocks a lot of little low things, then I would think that's adequate.
So, so we'll clean up, we'll get the box, box, container box out of there. We'll clean this area up. We won't take up any parking. We'll do the landscaping and, and hope that everyone's happy.
Yeah, in theory, they're mainly looking at parked cars. Right, after they clear up the metal container and stuff.
Mm-hmm. So, okay, okay.
So it's still, it would show the flag nicely to, you know, put a, you know, it would screen the cars a little bit. They still can see the back of the building, but only half of it.
Exactly.
With a fence. Right.
Do... I almost want to say that it's a, you should have, you should have submitted three plans, a hybrid sort of, of the two. But listen, I don't care what you put there. Whatever is, is the best that you can do on your own property. And, and Peter, to have them go on somebody else's property...
No, I don't, I don't think that should happen.
No, no.
Not at all.
Figure it out.
And, and Ed makes a valid point, being our attorney here, that, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you too, Rob.
Probably the fence and, and stuff would be more expensive, too. So you might as well just...
So this is our plan?
I like the plantings.
Yep, so we'll implement this plan right away.
Okay, okay.
We don't want six-inch shrubs, you know?
No, no, green giants, yeah.
Something with a little age to them, you know?
What is it?
What is it? We always said three feet?
I don't know what we said.
For shrubs and eight feet for trees? Yeah, it's, it's an account.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
Is it, do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, we do, don't we? You want to vote? I think you should have a vote.
All right.
I make a motion that we accept the applicant's proposal for improvements to the landscaping in whatever case that is, 3439R.
I'll second it.
Okay, this motion by Mr. Conner and a second by Mr. Peck to have them do some planting and take the clutter and construction box and fenced-in stuff, take that all out of the back. And that's it. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I really do appreciate it. Take a walk out behind your, your, your business down Janet Street someday. Last house on the right. Come see me.
I'm coming to lunch.
You'd be surprised. I'm a pretty damn good cook. I don't know that we have minutes. Yes, we need to, uh... Oh, now I closed out of everything. Here we go. Meeting minutes. Now, up here somewhere, there's an arrow. Hit this arrow. Download. She said download. Okay, gentlemen, we have the minutes for 2325.
After reviewing the minutes, I would make a motion that we accept them as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Kevin, you can't vote.
Oh, that's right. I was...
The minutes of, uh... Why have I got all 23?
2, 224.
I don't have a 224. You show me a 224.
Well... I'll make the same motion that I have reviewed those minutes for February 24th, which was Thorne Dyke and all that stuff. And fine, no, no corrections necessary. I, I say we approve them.
I'll second that.
All those in...
I have one correction.
Oh.
It says I was absent, but then at the end of the thing, it tells me supporting motions. So I remember...
How the hell did you open the damn document?
He's not absent.
Well, you weren't paying attention, is what happened, I think.
Otherwise, they were fine.
Now visit the minutes of March 3.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Oh, Landers Farm, yeah. I would second that. I read those over.
We have a motion for...
Yeah, David made a motion to accept it. Second.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Delete. Done.
Okay, that concludes the meeting for tonight. Thank you for tuning in. Good night.